Just a reminder to turn your microphones on. Good evening and welcome to the School Board Meeting of the Fairmont Area Schools. Roll call, all members are present with the exception of Dan Brookins. And please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have your minutes before you, I have an entertaining motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion by Mike, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
By Jen, motion to approve and second, all those in, any discussion, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, motion carries. We have an agenda before us. There's one change, I was not present at the SDCC meeting, were you, Andy?
Yeah.
Andy, would you like to report on that?
Yeah, they're in essence gonna share.
Yeah, they're gonna share what they talked about anyway. Okay, any other changes?
I don't think that's a technical change, we don't probably need to change it.
Okay. So as...
I make a motion to approve the agenda as...
Thank you, a motion by Mike, second by Julie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you, motion carries. Celebrations and school community reports, we don't have any tonight, so we'll move on to our superintendent's report and calendar.
Alright, thanks Nicole. As previously shared in preparation for the meeting, our student enrollment report remains relatively stable, down a few students from a couple weeks ago, but not a steep decline there. In the coming months, as we get into the new year, I will start reporting ranges as I did last year, so you can see the fluctuations in our, in our current year's student enrollment. Buildings and grounds updates, and this also plays into the operations committee report, that can be later, but Tyler and I meet monthly to go over buildings and grounds updates and progress on school district projects. We've continued to discuss the junior senior high school planning for the summer of '24 with the gymnasium project, a lot of maintenance-based projects there with duct cleaning, resurfacing the current floor that we have, and some painting to go along with that. We talked about different storage opportunities, as well as replacing some sewer drain lines here at the elementary school, as a means to upkeep and maintain those pieces before they get in disrepair. We did have a water tank, water heater tank issue here at the elementary school. We worked with a local contractor to repair the tank, and we'll continue to monitor that for potentially more substantial repair project in the future. Also, as part of operations committee, so I won't go into great detail of this, we had representatives from the Open Door Health Center in attendance to discuss with us parameters of continuing with that project. We are continuing with that, and an accompanying memorandum of agreement that will continue in progress and will be formally brought to the board for approval in the month of January, or consideration of approval, excuse me. One, the next item that I have to report on, as we do annually, we review our school district agreement for school photography services. We've used Strawbridge Studios for the last number of years. Going into this school year, we, we offered local business, Cyphred Portrait Design, the ability to present to, at a recent committee meeting, a proposal for providing school picture services to our school district, and as we look at that, the, we're looking at the, the services for the '24-'25 school year, and so the committee had the opportunity to ask questions, go over any details with Steve in that presentation, and after thoughtful consideration, the school district will be moving our school district photography services to Cyphred Portrait Design, which is based here in Fairmont. So, we are confident Steve and his team will provide quality product and experience, and we're looking forward to the partnership and providing the local business the opportunity to provide this service to our families. So, as we communicated with those entities today, Steve was very excited for the opportunity and very grateful to have the ability to provide that service to our school district. And continued planning meetings will ensue, and to make sure that they provide us everything we had, and potentially more than what our previous provider was able to do for us. So, generally, yeah, positively received on, on that end, and our previous provider was grateful for the personal communication and willing to help fill any gaps in the future as well, so, all in all, positive communication there.
Question I have, what happens for the families that cannot afford to purchase pictures? And that, do we have a process for that?
Yeah, so, that typically goes directly through our school social workers, and then in the package, as we've had in the past, that was one thing that was important, is we do have an allotted number of, of school portrait package scholarships for families in need, so, none of our families that, that desire to have that will go without, and will use those resources that are included in our agreement with the provider to, to provide that to our families that, that need it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you Superintendent Treidell. Moving on to financial business, we have tonight a representative from Ida Bailey, Bradley.
Always.
Hello. Testing, maybe? Am I technically challenged?
Is the screen open?
The red light's on.
This would I make a motion to approve the audit report?
Bradley might be okay with that.
I'm done here then, right? We'll try to keep it short and sweet for you. My name is Bradley Van Dyens, I've been with Ida Bailey seven, eight years now. I do work almost specifically with government clients, this is my first year on Fairmont School District, so that's why you have not seen me in the past, so you're stuck with the redhead tonight.
Well, with, with COVID, we haven't really seen anybody before anyway, so, welcome.
Hey, thank you, thanks for having me. So, I think everyone's got a copy of the executive summary in front of you there. Basically, we take the big, big financial statements, which is on the desk there, take all that information, put it into some easy-to-read graphs that hopefully provide the board with some useful information, kind of as you start looking at your decision-making process and overall health of the district. So, I'll jump right into it, and feel free to stop me at any point if you do have any questions, but probably most important is the audit result on page three, whole point of having an audit. Basically, from all the testing that we did, the school district received a clean or unmodified audit opinion, that's a good thing, just means that from our testing, we didn't find any material misstatements, your financial statements are accurately presented, things like that, so, we can't possibly test everything that happens within the school district, but from what we tested, you did receive that clean opinion, so, overall, good news there. Page four then talks about an audit of federal funds, this is consistent with the past several years, essentially with the volume of federal spending the district has, we have to do a separate compliance audit for federal programs. For fiscal year '23, we tested just the ESER program, which is about $1.5 million in spending, and so from that testing, again, received a clean opinion on the single audit portion of things as well, so we didn't have any material misstatements or non-compliance findings related to that single audit. Jumping ahead here then, I'm on page six, which summarizes the findings for the audit. So as I mentioned, no findings for federal awards, and then we also do Minnesota legal compliance testing, no findings there. The only finding you'll see that's consistent with past years as well, and that's just there because we, as your auditors, prepare the, the final financial statements, so there is a finding related to that, but that is consistent with the last several years, so no changes there this year. Page eight then, looks at cash and investments, so this gives you a 10-year historical perspective of where those cash balances have been, where they are, where they're headed. The only thing that this does exclude is, it does exclude any activity in the capital project fund, just due to inconsistencies in that fund, if you have a big project one year and then nothing for a couple years, we just take it out completely, because it's the most inconsistent of all the funds, so, this will just give you an idea of where that cash balance sits at the end of fiscal year '23, in comparison to the previous nine years. Alright, we'll go ahead here then, we'll look at the general fund, so this is your primary operating fund for the district. So the first thing we'll look at is ADMs or student counts, essentially this is important because it can have a big impact on state aid and all the funding that the district receives. All in all, you finished a little bit higher than you were for fiscal year '22, no large change there, but just again, gives you that 10-year perspective of where your student counts are, and again, that is an important measure, obviously discussed it at the beginning of the meeting, but something you always want to keep an eye on in terms of how that could impact district funding in the future. Slide 11, the budget to actual, so this focuses only on the general fund. This shows your actual results for the year in comparison to what the final budget was set at for fiscal year '23. All in all then, revenues were about $450,000 higher than what the actual final budget was set at, and then you'll see there's a negative 3%, negative variance there under expenditures, just means that actual spending was a little bit higher than what the final budget was set at. All in all, if we follow that actual column down to the bottom, you'll see the general fund decreased, about $700,000 there for fiscal year '23, bringing your overall ending fund balance to just over $7 million, which as we'll talk about in the next couple slides, gets broken out into several different categories and buckets. Couple slides just to touch on quickly here, you do have that positive $7 million fund balance, that's a good thing in general, it gives you better bond ratings. If we have a year like COVID where maybe you're gonna have an unexpected drop in revenue or something like that, it gives you a bit of a cushion, so, this just goes over some of the overall benefits of having that positive fund balance. And then slide 13, the next one looks at the different categories, we'll look at some numbers on the next slide, but if you're curious about some more definitions of what each of the categories represents, that's simply there to provide that guide for you. Page 14 then, looks at the actual change in fund balance, so this gives you that $7 million there in the bottom, bottom right, and then shows you how that's broken out into all the different categories. The one thing I always point out here, anything that has restricted in front of it, that means there is some sort of outside restriction on that, there's some sort of outside organization, be it the state or federal government, saying, hey, here's some dollars, they can only be used for that particular purpose, the board can for no reason move it to another category and use it for another purpose, so anything with restricted, it's there because someone else said it needs to be there. Anything that's in committed or signed, those are dollars that are set aside by the school board for, for a particular purpose, it's just internally designated as opposed to externally with the restricted funds. And then all in all, you'll see the unassigned fund balance there at the bottom, that's essentially the general operating bucket there for the discretion of the school board for school operations. Slide 15 then, similar information in a different format, so this will give you that 10-year look as opposed to just fiscal year '23, so you can see how the overall fund balance compares in all the different categories, and then that decrease there between '22 and '23, that'll be that $700,000 that we talked about on the budget to actual slide, so that's where that decrease is coming from there. Slide 16, a couple things I'll point out, that top paragraph there, that's what we're gonna focus on, it's supposed to represent the district's fund balance policy, we do have the incorrect information in there, so the actual numbers are, the district's current fund balance policy is to maintain unrestricted and unassigned fund balance, ranging from 12% to 35%. That slide currently says 8.3%, that is not accurate for the updated policy, so just an item to note there. Looking at the next slide then, the actual results that are shown there, that blue line, that is specifically just unassigned fund balance, so for the year, that was a little over 12%, I think it was 12.2% of general fund operating expenditures, so that does fit within that 12% to 35%, and then the other piece not shown here would be the unrestricted fund balance, and that would throw in those assigned and committed dollars that the board can set aside for the particular funds, in addition to the unassigned fund balance, and that math comes out to about 22.1% of your general fund expenditure, so again, within that range. Good part about it is, I always say that these fund balance policies, it's strictly a tool for the board, no one from the state or no outside organization's ever gonna come in and say, hey, you're way above, or you're way below, or this policy's not set to the correct parameters, it's simply a tool for you to monitor where that fund balance is and make sure it's where you want it to be essentially, and it can be used in, in any manner that you choose essentially, so. Alright, that was everything general fund related, there are a few other funds we'll just touch on briefly here. Slide 19 looks at the Community Service Fund, so that'll give you an idea of fund balance that's available for different community service programs, some examples would be early childhood or school readiness, a variety of other categories that fall within there as well and different activities, but these are fund balance that's available for those purposes only, so specifically community service activities. The next slide then, slide 20, looks at the Food Service Fund, same concept, we've talked about it in the past, that red line that's going across the bottom, that's the state saying, hey, that's essentially the maximum fund balance they want to see, so in an ideal world, they don't want fund balance to exceed that, obviously it does and has for the last several years, a lot of that we've talked about in the past stems from the federal reimbursement rates over the past several years, was significantly higher than what most school districts would normally charge for a meal, so those revenues have been skyrocketing while you're still providing the same number of meals essentially, so expenses haven't necessarily changed to the same degree, so, almost every...
So with the, the state now providing the meals, and, and we probably can't forecast next year's, but we would see that that fund balance is not gonna decrease, correct?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so...
So if that state funding rate is also higher, and it sounds like it is than what a normal meal charge would be, I would expect that trend's gonna continue. I'll point out that almost every district I audit, the graph looks very similar to this, so, the state's ultimately gonna have to provide some guidance in terms of what they want to do, they've been pretty lenient with that over the last few years, understanding...
Well, that or they need to raise the red line.
Right, so, one or the other's gonna happen, and so, you know, it's, at the end of the day, even if they do come in and say something, all they're gonna, they're gonna want is a plan for how you're gonna spend that down, but I know a lot of my districts have already exhausted kitchen equipments and things like that, like there's only so much you can actually upgrade with that funding, so, not to beat on that point, but it's, I think that trend will continue, and ultimately the state's gonna have to decide what they want to do with that, because this is gonna be a common conversation at every district, so, or most of them, I should say. A couple final slides here, the Debt Service Fund, this shows your fund balance that's available to make future debt payments, so as those principal and interest payments come due, this is just showing fund balance that's available to actually make those payments. Then this slide, slide 22, looks at a couple different, they're called permanent funds, but this is looking specifically at the two trust funds, so there's enrichment opportunities, and then I believe there's a Hunt Farm Trust Fund as well, so this'll give you an idea where those fund balances are in total for the last 10 years. And then the very last slide here looks at cost per ADM, so this is taking your expenditures on a per-student basis. The first line represents your fiscal year '22 operations, the second line's fiscal year '22, those other two graphs then look at state averages, they don't have fiscal year '23 data available at the time we compiled this, so that's why it's compared to fiscal year '22. The first one being just the whole state of Minnesota, the last line being schools of a similar size, so that's looking at districts ranging from, I believe it's 1,000 to 2,000 students essentially, for where Fairmont would fall into that spectrum. So again, it's not the perfect comparison, and ultimately, it's, you know, poor discretion to decide where you're at in terms of this, but it just gives you a little comparison, if, a lot of times we're asked, how do we compare to other schools, here's kind of a big snapshot of what that looks like on a, on an expenditure basis, so. And that is the end of the executive summary, so I guess based on that, any particular questions that I can address, or any other information that I can help you with here tonight?
Motion to, motion to accept the audit summary presentation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion by Mike, second by Jen, any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one thing quick. For Jess, you know, Jessica being heavily involved in this process, one year into the role, the first year she was really thrown, like bulk of the work was done by her predecessor, she had to give the report but wasn't really involved in the audit process because of the transition timeline, so for her first year in the role, to continue our trend of, no findings in our audit report is commendable, in year one in a brand-new role, so I just wanted to acknowledge that and the work that she's done in collaborating with the auditors during the month of October, getting everything where it needs to be, along with our other district office staff, that plays a role in paying our bills and, you know, running our payroll and all those things, so, just wanted to publicly acknowledge that, so thank you Jessica for your work, and thank you Bradley for your collaboration, I know we're paying you for this service, but, but at the same time, yeah, it's been, it's been a good process, so, we appreciate the, the collaboration with Ida Bailey.
We appreciate working with the district and, and auditors, we can be a handful to work with, so Jessica can tell you, I'm on the phone with her pretty much every day saying, hey, where's this report, where's that report, so, it is a big project, it's a big team effort, so, we can't do it without her helping us and vice versa, so.
Well, the other thing too is, you know, I see, you know, in the audit report, you know, that, you know, our fund balances, you know, seem to have lots of money in there, but those funds have to be there for our students, and, you know, we have restricted, we have assigned, unassigned, and, you know, so it's, you know, it's kind of a balancing act that Jessica, that, that the crew has to, to even do this, for our district to maintain, because the only thing we don't want to do is go into deficit or statutory operating debt, and so that's why it's important, I mean, we, we have been spending down our fund balance in the last couple of years, but, you know, it's important to have a fund balance too, just for that fact, so, that's, I mean, that's what's nice to see in that audit report, that we do have such a, you know, yes, we have a policy that says what our fund balance is, but yes, we are maintaining that, so that's important.
So hopefully, hopefully these, these 10-year graphs can give you a little bit of historical perspective too, because the financials only show fiscal year '23, whereas this'll give you a kind of a quick look at how it's been versus where it is now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks for having me.
Motion carries. We'll move on to donations and grants, Jen?
Yeah, we have a couple donations to approve here tonight, so therefore be it resolved that the Fairmont Area School Board of Education gratefully accepts the following donations as identified here. Myron Moller, looks like $5,640, it's the yield from the sale of soybeans harvested from the Mayo Health System property, and that was donated to the FFA program, and the Martin County Farm Bureau Association in the amount of $1,500, also going to FFA program.
Thank you, we have a motion from Jen for that, do we have a second? Thank you, Mike, any discussion? Roll call vote, Jen?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Financial reports and bills, Jessica?
Yes, so you should have in front of you both the wire transfer sheet from November 23rd to December 7th, there is nothing out of the ordinary on there, our normal wires that go out, and then you have the bills for tonight, and just the one that kind of is not really out of the ordinary, but the check number 69310 to Flight Deck Athletics, $7,158, it was, they had gotten some different pole vault equipment, so, on a rotation, and this was their year to purchase some of that, and I believe the association is helping fund that too.
Booster closed, or closed, sorry, Mr. Close, yes. Okay, any questions for Jen, or I'm sorry, for Jessica?
If there aren't any questions or anything, I would make a motion to approve the wire transfers for November 23rd, 2023, to December 7th, 2023, the November 30th, 2023, single checks, and payment of the December 12th, 2023 bills.
Thank you, we have a motion by Julie, second by Mari, any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. No old business, so we will move on to new business, we have Kim Niss here to present the World's Best Workforce update.
Alright, so, we are here tonight to report to you our results and our progress towards the goals of the World's Best Workforce legislation, it was passed in 2013 under Minnesota statutes, and it, really the development and implementation of the World's Best Workforce is meant to ensure that school districts and charter schools in Minnesota enhance student achievement, and as part of that legislation, schools are required to share the results of the goals at an annual public stakeholder meeting. Within that legislation also, it does define kind of your role as a school board member, and that is to establish an advisory committee, which you have identified to be our District Staff Development Committee, where Nicole serves as a member, and after me presenting the World's Best Workforce results, you'll hear from our co-chairs, Ashley Skabel and Tiffany Harris, regarding the goals and the action plans we developed as we continue to progress towards the achievement of these goals. So, and I'm, I'll kind of go back and forth here. So again, the World's Best Workforce addresses the following five pillars, so we have school readiness, and that's really all of our children are ready for school, third grade literacy, where all third grade students can read at grade level, closing the achievement gap, where all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed, college and career readiness, where we want all our students to be ready for college and career, and then all students graduate, where all students will graduate from high school. So those are the five pillars, and tonight, we'll report on, on those five goals. Again, as a district, we complete a report to the state, which we would link to our website, so our community can see the results as well there, the report is due this Friday, and this meeting date is shared within that report, and this is part of the requirement for sharing the results at a public meeting, so that again is why we're here tonight. So we'll really just begin, and we'll go over the five goals and how we did towards the progress of those goals, a couple of the goals, I'll add some additional data, but I know that it has been discussed that possibly a work session to maybe dig into our data a little bit further, because these are just again, big overviews, so, as that District Staff Development Committee, they're one group that really digs a little bit deeper into, into the data, so, we will begin with our school readiness goal. So the, and we're always a year behind when we do the World's Best Workforce Report as well, so like this is last year's goals, so, the '22-'23 goal for school readiness is that the percentage of kindergarten-eligible students meeting their developmental score within three essential focus items of alphabetic knowledge, numbers and counting, and emotions will increase by 3%, and so, the, it shows kind of up there where we started with emotions, that we would go from 70% to 73%, and alphabetic, alphabetic knowledge, we would move from 42% to 45%, and then numbers and counting, 76% to 79%, and then we were taking, getting some base data on the physical movement area to add to that goal. So with the school readiness pillar, we did not meet our goal with the increase of 3% for all three of the goal areas, we met two out of the three. So with emotions, we went from 70% to 78%, the alphabetic knowledge from 42% to 62%, but then that numbers and counting, we went from 76% in the spring of '21-'22 to 70% in the spring of '22-'23. So again, because we had said we wanted to increase all three areas by 3%, and we met two out of the three of those, we did not meet our goal for the school readiness pillar.
Kim?
Yep.
These aren't measuring the same students, correct?
Correct.
So it's the students who, if they were four, they'll be in kindergarten now, but it's measuring four-year-olds one year versus the next year's four-year-olds?
Yes, yeah, yep, so it is a different cohort of students, but always, yeah. The next goal, the third grade literacy pillar, and this pillar of the World's Best Workforce, this is the last year that we'll be reporting on this pillar within the World's Best Workforce Report, because it is being replaced by the READ Act. So our goal for third grade literacy was that the percentage of all students in grades K through 3 at Fairmont Elementary who are in the low-risk and exceeds categories on the FAST-A reading standardized assessment would increase from 47% in spring of 2022 to 57% in the spring of 2023, and again, our FAST assessment, that's our internal universal screener that we use to also analyze where students are and like actions that we need to do to work with our students, so it's our kind of internal assessment. This result, we also did not meet, so, our students... assessment. Um, this result, we also did not meet. Um, so, our students in the low risk and exceeds rose, um, but from 47% to 51%. So again, because the goal was a 10% increase, um, we did not make our goal. Um, we also had said within that goal too, we did not want to decrease the number of, in the exceeds category. And so we did maintain 23% in the exceeds. But again, we had only increased there by 4%. Um, with the third grade literacy pillar though, I do have, there's some additional data there to take a look at. So we have been doing a lot of research within early elementary and really literacy in really how students learn to read. And there's a lot of research, and you may have heard of the science of reading. Um, and we have really, um, been engaged in that, um, further developing our understanding of it. And our teachers are also learning with that as well. And so, as we are learning, we have realized that we needed to make some curricular changes in our K1 and 2. And so we have made curricular changes within the last, this will be the second year that we've added a phonemic awareness, um, program, uh, called Hegarty, that our teachers really, um, appreciate and enjoy, and our students appreciate and enjoy as well. And so we are seeing some positive results from some of those changes. Um, so in this grade level data, if you follow the row across, that's kind of exactly what Nicole just said. Those are two different cohorts of students. If you take a look at the highlights, that would be the same cohort of student. Um, so you can see there, like with our kindergarten students in the spring of 2022, did they increase in the spring of 23? So the increase or decrease in that final column shows again, the row, not the cohort. But you can see our kindergartner students from the same cohort increased, the first grade cohort, uh, group of students increased, and then also the second grade students increased. So, um, I have those listed kind of there at top, 1.2% increase, 5.3% increase, and 8.4% increase. Um, so again.
So where, where is the goal to measure that against? Because I, I appreciate that we're measuring two different things, and the goals that are listed above that. But I'm not seeing the goal that we wanted to see from the same cohort from year to year. Is it the same 3%? Or would we expect to see a higher percent as they progress through the grades?
Okay. I'm gonna, I think I.
I know that's a complicated question.
Yeah.
You know how to ask it any other way, but I, you see my point that.
Are you asking, Mike, like, what's expected growth?
What we wanted.
Versus.
Like, the 3% is, that's the calls point. Or it's this year, and then next year, we're measuring different kids, and that's what this goal applies to. You're showing us really good data on what our actual kids are doing as they progress to the next grade. But I don't know what the goal was. Like, if the goal was they go from 44.5 to 50, we missed it. If the goal was they go from 44.5 to 45, we exceeded it. So without knowing what the goal was on that chart on page six, the second one, like, I, like, this, this might be great news, but I don't know. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to compare it to. Because it's not being compared to the actual goal above, because it's a different measure. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So the goal, the third grade literacy goal is what's reported.
Right.
And this is additional anecdotal information to show, like, what the cohort, like, um, so, we have a child in our family that was a, he would have been a student in kindergarten in the spring of 22. That cohort, as that child of ours finished first grade in the spring of 23, that's what you're getting at, increase from 44.5 as a cohort to 45.7 in those two areas. So the low risk and exceeds are the two categories of what we would classify as our highest achieving students, that we wanted to maintain and grow. Because if we're bringing all of our students into those categories, so the fact that the percentage of students in those categories is increasing is a positive from year to year.
The state measures at grade level, not with the cohorts as they go.
Right.
As they progress. So, Kim is providing us with both data.
Yeah.
Um, because the state just measures at third graders. It doesn't care if they improve, again, in fourth grade. It's measuring students that are not the same, once they're just at third grade.
Yeah. And Mike.
And so that's what our goal is based on.
Yeah. And like, in this chart, this right here is what was used for the goal, because again, we're looking at, like, so the kindergarten group, they rose 9.8. And our goal was that, like, we wanted everybody to increase by 10%. And that was really an average over all of those grade levels. So when we're looking at just the kindergarten class from one year to the next, they were by far the closest to getting to that 10%. Um, I would say that 10% was a very, very rigorous goal, um, that we had set. Um, and I would also say that the kindergarten group of teachers is probably the, uh, team that we've worked the closest with, um, regarding the science of reading and the changes we've made from a curricular standpoint. And then we've added the first grade to it. So the, when you really kind of look at that, the, the kindergarten class really truly did almost get to that 10%. We were aiming for 10%. But again, that was a very, very rigorous goal that was set.
So let me ask you my other question, then.
Yeah.
Um, we didn't really make any of the goals in this document, which is fine. Their goals are just a snapshot in time that you're using to measure. It would seem to me, given our failure to meet our goals over most of these, that maybe our goals were not appropriately right-sized. Are we doing anything to measure whether or not our goals were appropriately set? Like, if our goal's 10, and we're getting 3% across the board, was that 10 unnecessarily rigorous and lofty? Was there other factors? Because to me, there's two pieces of this. What are we measuring, comparing ourselves to? And the second is, are, what are we using to evaluate our goals? Because if our goals aren't being met, there's only two explanations. We didn't do what we needed to do to meet our goal, or our goal was unreasonably high. Um, at least from my perspective. So I'm, I'm kind of curious, what, when you do this again next year, like, what are you, do we keep those goals static? Do we adjust those goals down? Like, what learnings from the results are informing the goals for the next round?
And a lot of times, when we, when we do have to write these goals, like, we, we do have, um, templates, say, from the state. And a lot of times, we have to, we have to start with, like, what our baseline is. So that's why, you know, we always have our baseline, and then we have, like, a certain percentage that we really need to maybe possibly look at setting. A lot of times, it's around that 3%. Um, but sometimes that's hard to do as well, because where our students are, we don't have a lot of kids within that, say, pot, that's the partially meets to say, get to that proficient standpoint. And so it is a difficult goal because.
Two kids can change your outcome.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So we do really use a lot of the guidance from the state as we are writing our goals, and they do need to be approved by the state. So, and it is, it's different cohorts coming through, but it's kind of like, where was last year's cohort? And setting that as the baseline, and then, you know, kind of creating that percentage from that.
So then, do we take this data and compare it to other schools in the state? I mean, if the state is the one who's giving us the, what you have to do, are we just alone in this? Or do we compare what we have? And are we doing what everybody else is doing? Or is everybody doing what we're doing? Or do you, do you see where, I mean, I don't see where there, if we're not given some of these things, and we're not comparing some of the, you know, are we really doing apples to apples?
Mm-hmm. You know, and that's where, like, like, these are just big overall numbers. Like, what we have to, what we do as a district then, and this is like, kind of the district advisory committee, and as we've talked with our site teams, this is where we have to nail down to our kids. And where are, where are our kids at? And what do our kids need? Um, so we, like, um, I was talking to Mr. Superintendent Tredo on, we know that they give this test once a year. The, the, our internal assessments, we do three times a year. Um, but really, when they take this assessment, it's like our kids are being put into a performance. And we know that our, some of our kids are not ready for that performance yet. So we should know going into that, like, do our kids still need more practice on that? And if they need more practice, and they're not at that grade level yet, like, how are we accelerating their practice so that they can get to grade level? So that's where, like, we dial in on, on this data, but we dial it into the kids to know where they're at.
But how do you, how do you do this practice without losing the value, or the kids realizing the seriousness of the testing and, and that as well? You know, I mean, we all know that kids get tested all the time, and that some kids test better than other kids. And, you know, how, how does, how is that standardized?
Yeah. And that's where too, that's why we want to use multiple, um, data points, you know? Like, we definitely found that our third grade MCA scores and their FASTRidge didn't align. So, you know, then that makes us, like, wonder, like, did our third grades, you know, did they just not know how to navigate the test platform? You know, because like, those, those data points don't match up. So now we're really watching them as fourth graders, and we're doing those internal assessments to see, you know, is that holding true, or is that not holding true? And what adjustments do we need to make?
I would just add too, there's, you know, anytime you have standardized assessments, there's a multitude of variables. Um, in terms of, you know, the setting, the date, the test, the year, the cohort of students, um, student demographics. Uh, I think, and what I would add is, our, our most important comparison is to ourselves, in how we are growing and progressing from year to year. And I've said in, in a lot of different smaller group meetings, like, our goals are important, but ultimately, what's the most important is our commitment to those goals and the actions that we're taking. Because we have to justify the actions that we are putting in place to achieve the goals. And are they aligned with best practice? You know, the state just came out with the READ Act and defined some different things, and there's some trainings that we're going to be required to do coming up. Um, so, our, our goals are important. Um, the results are important, but at the same time, I think the greatest value comes in, what are our commitments to those goals and the actions that we are taking? And how are we doing against ourselves from year to year? Because every, you know, of the 300 to 400 school, public school districts across the state, you're going to have different variables in every single district. And in our, our teachers are really buying in and doing a great job, um, with, uh, the things that are being put in front of them, in the learnings that we do have. So, um, I think, you know, our, our trajectory is exciting. The base level that our teachers are building is exciting. Um, and I just, I, I continue to look forward to how are we doing against our own, like, these cohorts. When I look at that, those literacy things to see every grade level, as they went from kindergarten to first, first to second, second to third, is adding more kids in a higher achievement level, that's extremely exciting to see. Um, so there's, there's a lot of nuances in data analysis as, you know, if there are those of you that are into analytics. Um, but I think, uh, yeah, I, to your point, Julie, there's a lot to consider. It's hard to compare.
Yeah. And, and for us, as board members, not being in the actual day-to-day processing, you know, we don't see that. We don't experience that. And, you know, we have to report to our public, to, you know, parents. You know, they're the ones who are going to come to us and say, you know, these numbers and, you know, and yes, and then, I'm sorry, Andy, but then, I'm going to say, refer them to you or to the building principals, because I won't have that answer, because, you know. But like I said, it's just, sometimes it just makes it harder, and, and, you know, you just can't make it easier. You know? It's, it's, it's hard to understand.
Right. But I think, uh, you're wise to compare ourselves to ourselves. That's what we care about. But I also remind everyone that, you know, everyone's taking this test. It's a static test. All the factors and variables that are individual to our students or our classes that are taking them, that's like, that's a static thing generally across all, we're not the only school taking it. Every school does. So there's still validity in comparing how we're doing to how everyone else is doing. Now, if we had a tornado warning that day, uh, or, you know, southwestern Minnesota had a tornado warning that day, and our, those tests bombed, those are variables that you consider.
Right.
But like, it's a statewide test that is generally substantially similar testing conditions. So we shouldn't just not, just ignore similar situated demographics in other schools taking a test at the same time. But to your point, I do care more about how we're doing to ourselves. And while I know we didn't meet a lot of our goals, and I've already commented on, you know, the first thing I look at is our, are the goals appropriate? And it sounds like they're more template from the state, which would then suggest to me that they're just reference points and not a real goal. What I care about is progress. And despite not having the progress we maybe thought we wanted to have, by and large, we have progress throughout here. And I think that's the thing that, when you analyze data and you can make it say wherever you want, what it clearly says is that more kids are doing better as they go through our system, which is exactly what we want to be able to have our students experience. So, if my questions sound unnecessarily critical or lawyer-like, I apologize. It's the only way I know how to ask questions. I do want to acknowledge, there's a lot of hard work going on here, and there is improvement, and it's, it's borne by the, by the data. Um, I recognize that. And I also recognize, Kim, that you're telling us that you're using this data to change our best, to say a ruble can be differently, different curriculum, different trainings. Um, so I, I just want to make sure that I, it's clear that I, I recognize that, even though I, I know my questions might suggest a negative tone.
No, we, we appreciate the questions. Um, so then, the, close, so the close the achievement gap pillar, I will kind of move ahead to that one. With this particular goal, um, again, in, as Mike said, yeah, we, of the, we were, we're able to report on four of our goals, um, and we did not meet any of, any of the four that we are reporting on. So the close the achievement gap pillar, um, by May of 2023, the proficiency gap between the non-BIPOC students and the BIPOC students enrolled in grades 3 through 10 at Fairmont Area Schools on the reading MCA will decrease from 17% in 2022 to 14% in 2023. And we wanted to do that by increasing the proficiency rate from our non-BIPOC students, 53.1 to 56.1, and then our BIPOC students from 36.5 to 42.5. So again, as, um, the state would say, we cannot decrease that gap by, you know, decreasing, say, our, our group, that would then narrow the gap. So both groups have to increase. Um, so with this result, um, we actually had a, a decrease in achievement in both our BIPOC students and our non-BIPOC students. Um, our non-BIPOC students decreased from 53.1, or 53.1 to 51.6. And then our BIPOC students decreased from 36.5 to 31.9. So the gap for, um, 2021, or 21, 22 was 16.6. And then in 22, 23, the gap became larger at 19.7. So, um, again, we did not meet that goal. This one too, as we took, took a look at, like, just again, breaking down the data. And again, this is overall district data, so we always encourage our sites. Like, you have to take this data now, and you have to, you know, even dissect this further, and you have to really take a look at the kids. We did notice something that, again, we are taking action with. So if you take a look at that breakdown of data per grade level, we are seeing, um, and I, this would be a trend that, um, a pattern that is developing, is that we, so, so again, as you kind of followed those, um, highlights, we are noticing that in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade years, we are having a decrease in proficiency in the same cohort of kids. So that raises a, a huge concern for us, like, what's happening in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade years? And so we have definitely kind of identified that. We've kind of, again, encouraged the, um, sites to dig into this deeper. We are going, you know, we are doing research into middle level, um, just even structures and design, and the curriculum, and some of those pieces. Um, I was able to do a site visit to Southview Middle School in Edina, Minnesota, and we're hopefully taking a team there in January to, again, kind of look at the structures within their middle level. Um, and so really kind of honing in on maybe like, what is happening at our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level. So that's kind of what our, our data's telling us there, that we need to look into that.
So I appreciate that's, you're describing exactly what you should do when you see that data. Um, my, um, my thoughts or advice would be, make sure that you set targets with deliverables, because you could have over, you have paralysis by over-analysis. Like, we can't crack this nut exactly what is going on. At some point, you have to, you're acknowledging, what we're doing clearly isn't netting the results that we want, so we have to do something different. Um, don't let, what's the phrase? You know, let perfect be the enemy of good, you know?
Right. Right.
Do something different and don't like, like fix that because that, that one did jump out of the page and it's pretty uniform, the achievement gap. Honestly, proportionally is almost, it's, it's impacting everybody.
Yes.
Which means there's something there, but don't use your best guess at some point and say, let's try this, which is different.
Yep. All right, and then the all students graduate pillar, again.
I had a question about that one too. So this is a kind of a pet peeve of mine. The graduation rate that you're using on this is not actually what we would use for a graduation rate for our own kids. This is the state measure, correct? Were they basically any kid that was here for a cup of coffee? Who, three years ago, still counts as our graduation rate?
Yeah.
Right? So do we track with our, kind of our own little pencil ledger, what our actual graduation rate is that every normal person would use instead of MDE?
You, you know, yes, we, yes.
And how are we doing on that one?
You know, and it's, of course, I didn't, every other year I have had that and this year I have not because I wasn't able to sit with Chad. But we do, we have Sarah Truesdale run off the list for us. We take a look at all the kids, we take a look at the kids who would like zing us from the state.
Yep.
And then we kind of like, what happened to that student? And yes, we have had somewhere.
You're still tracking it.
Yes, yes.
That was really all, you used to have it in there and I'm like.
Yes.
This, this, there's a lot of things that we have zero control over that could hurt us on this number.
Yeah, yeah, and I just didn't have a chance to sit with Chad because I didn't know some of those, where the, some of those kids, what happened. So, so yeah, so we'll work. And then there's a slide here too, that just again, shows our past graduation rates through the class of 2014. And you can see we really do hover around that 90% mark, but again, we want to always continue to increase that. So that's kind of, you can see there, our trend data there with graduation rate. And then the final pillar is the college and the career readiness. And so with this particular goal, we had set the goal that by May 2023 proficiency of achievement of students taking the eighth grade math MCA assessment would increase by 9.3% from 27% of seventh graders to 37% as eighth graders. And last year in our, for our eighth grade MCA math assessment, we actually decreased from 27.7 to 25%. And so, so again, they were 27.7% of seventh graders, so we were using the same cohort of students and setting that goal. We were able to get preliminary results of this right away last spring. And we did take action right away when we saw this. So we actually then gave the students our own internal assessment just to see like, did they not try on this assessment? Are these accurate results? And so we gave an internal assessment and really talked to the kids about the importance of, you have to show us what you can do. Cause we're going to be making some major decisions based on what, what we find. And so Asha was kind of part of that team, I'm not sure where she went, but she, Asha was part of that team. So we did, the, the internal assessment that we gave really did hold true to the results that we did get from the MCA. And so this summer, we worked with, as a team of math through advanced algebra. So Amanda Y was part of that, Ashley Skabel, myself, and then our seventh and eighth grade teachers. And we really, really, really looked at curriculum alignment. And then we also looked at learning progressions because we know that our kids now are taking geometry and they're missing a lot of the skills they need from the eighth grade standards. And so as they looked at those learning progressions, they did create assessments that they give before each unit. So they really broke their units down into like, what are the skills they need? And they'll give that pre-assessment, or they've been giving that pre-assessment before the unit so that they can go back and reteach those skills and still continue with their standards. So, and then that, you know, and we did really deep curriculum work at that seventh and eighth grade level as well, based on these preliminary results we had gotten. So those are our five goals. There is a link in here to the full report and it, that is still in draft form, but the goals themselves and the results have been submitted to the state. And these were the results that, that we had. So Tiffany then is part of the, is one of the chairs of the district staff development curriculum council. So be, be, based on these results, we work as a team then to devise plans of what we need to do from a district and Tiffany's going to share that with you now.
Hi. Ashley apologizes, she had something come up with her family, so she had to leave. So I'm going to tackle this on my own and try my best. So the educational improvement plan is something that the staff development and curriculum council goes through every year. In June and August, we have summer retreat dates where the staff development curriculum council members, including teachers, parents, and all that kind of stuff, we meet together and we reflect on everything that's happened in years past. We reflected this year specifically on the immense work that was completed by the strategic planning committee and kept the reflections and results collected from the staff, students and parents in mind as we went through that process earlier this year. We decided this year to focus on all students rather than a specific subgroup like recent years past, so our goal is stated up on the board. The percentage of all students in grades four through 11 at Fairmont area schools will increase their overall composite score on the Minnesota comprehensive assessment in reading from 46% in May 2023 to 53% in May of 2024. We created one unified goal this year for our district rather than having separate goals for the two different sites. It's all one unified goal. We felt that after a lot of conversation, we felt that all staff would feel like they have an active role in trying to achieve this goal. So everybody has a piece in the puzzle to making this goal hopefully happen when we look at the data next year. We chose this age range due to the MCA is being given through third grade, to third graders through eighth grade and then again in 10th grade, so that the data is accessible to us at SDCC to use and analyze. The composite score that we chose to use is their overall scores on the MCA that we will analyze as well. And then finally, the other little piece in that goal is the 7% increase was decided based on data from analyzing data from previous three years. So what's next is something that I'm really passionate about. We created a video just to kind of put actual video footage and faces and people, like the real parts that really make this goal hopefully happen and attainable. That also has to do with the educational improvement plan in, in whole. So it includes a blend of our mission statement, our vision, our three core values that we reduced from years past with multiple core values. Our classroom theory of action, which is my personal favorite from the strategic plan that we created. And then also the three focal areas that we feel will impact the classroom theory of action and the students desire daily experiences the most. Those three focal areas are professional learning communities, our PLCs, our positive behavior intervention supports, PBIS, and our tier one instruction and data, which we've been focusing on a lot. So we feel that those three will impact this the most and that's the areas we chose to focus on. We hope you guys enjoy this peek and our video, which is coming up next into some of our classrooms. It's just a couple of minutes long and the impact that we are confident that our staff is making on the achievement and wellbeing of our district students. This video is also shared with our staff about a week and a half ago. I didn't want to edit that out.
They coughed, you mean when they coughed and then hugged each other right after.
That's a very authentic video.
Yes, yes. We just really wanted to humanize like all of those things, like the 10 different, you know, goals that we talk about with our students and looking at the needs and wants of our students, staff and our families. It's important, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. And Tiffany, both, I know Ashley's not here, but thank you to the both of you for your work on that. As pointed out, it's an authentic look into some action in our classrooms and you as board members don't often get those peeks into the classroom, so for showing this video at a public meeting, it gives just some little glimpses of, of all the great things that our teachers are doing and points out how that aligns with our strategic plan and the direction we're trying to move. So thank you to the both of you and Kim for, for your detailed analysis and reports and for sharing that.
Now, we didn't just get to see the presentation and hear the data and all that and the hard work that was put into it, we need to actually vote or to make a motion to approve this education improvement plan? Is there anyone?
Accept or approve.
The motion says to accept, to approve or disapprove.
To approve.
Says approve or disapprove, so.
We approve the plan.
I will make a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 educational improvement plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, have a motion by Mari, second by Mike. Any discussion or further questions? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Thank you, motion carries and thank you again for your, all your hard work and presentations. We will move on to policy in new business and Julie?
Yes, in your packet, you have a first reading of a new policy. Policy 621 literacy and the READ Act. This has been reviewed from the committee twice now and now is being brought for us to read through it and to, and then we'll come back again then to do the final vote. So as members, just to go through and, and look through this policy, if you have any changes or any suggestions or anything as that, I'm not going to read through it because it is of course eight, eight pages long, so not going to take that kind of time tonight. So that's all I have to do with that. And like I said, that's appendix D in your packet, so everybody should have that. If, is there anybody who does not have that?
First reading now and then we'll do approval January meeting probably?
Yep.
Probably. Yeah, I'm sure we'll have some others probably, because we'll meet again here now in another week and we'll probably have some others that'll be come back to the board for approval as well. Then in the second is a policy revisions. Appendix E is bullying prohibition policy. That has been to the committee and has had some revisions, you'll see that in blue. Some of these are the MSBA revisions. I don't have my notes with me because I wasn't sure that I was speaking on it, so I don't have anything that I had put in special on there that was review. Was there anything Nicole that you can remember that?
No.
That there was? And then the other policy is 514. So the first one is 514 bullying prohibition, oops, I'm sorry. A is, I'm looking at the reference sheet and I'm also looking at the policy, or the board minutes. So 514 is a, the bullying prohibition and appendix, or policy 903, appendix F, is that correct? Yes. That is also reviewed on the committee in support of implementing those changes and those again are on MSBA's changes as well, so. So I'll just bring those all for you, so I'll make that motion to approve both of those policies as we have looked through those in the committee.
I'll second. Thank you, we have a motion by Julie, a second by Jen, to approve policy 514 bullying prohibition and policy 903 visitors to school district buildings and sites. Any discussion?
Just add that policy 903, the visitor policy. Those revisions also came directly from our school's legal firm, Squires, Walzberger and Mace. And following their consultation conference, these were the recommendations from, from that legal review as well.
They missed, they added the word the a couple of times that maybe I wouldn't have added. On, on the school premises, at the, at the school functions, doesn't necessarily sound well.
You're talking about 514.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. So 5141, the word the, is this?
Well, maybe then you should be on the committee next year and make those grammar changes for us.
I mean, I was, I'm like, I'll look at it, no, I can't.
We've looked at so many policies this year.
There's room for him to be honest.
They have motion to approve the policies as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Do we, oh, I second.
I thought there was already a policy or a motion on the floor.
Oh, it was? Oh, okay. I didn't mark it down.
Any other discussion aside from the word the being used repetitively? All right.
There's probably an A missing too, but.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Thank you, motion carries. We'll move on to personnel, employment. Mike, would you like to present on that?
Sure, we have two individuals that we need to approve for employment. Tora Nava?
Nava. Nava.
Tore Nava is a high school special ed paraprofessional. We need the effective date to be November 27, 2023. We also need to approve Gabriel Martinez as the long-term substitute elementary EL teacher. Gabriel's effective date will, will be January 15, 2024. I think a motion that we approve their employment.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Mike, second by Julie for the approval of employment. Any discussion?
I think it's, just to make note that they both, I see here are both Fairmont graduates just for, just a note.
Interesting, good. Good to have them back.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Board and committee reports, I was not at SDCC.
And, and Kim and Tiffany pretty much covered the extent of what was discussed and reviewed at that meeting, so no further details to share.
Thank you. Operations committee meeting, Mike?
Sure. We are, as you know, we're switching to local, local company to provide our school pictures. We talked about that. One thing we noted in that conversation is that the majority, we're not sure what percent, but more than 50% of our students are already very familiar with sight free photography, having, if they participate in any extracurricular sports activity, they've, they're very familiar with that process. So we anticipate minimal, to really know learning curve or, or get familiar with the process there. Talked about the truth of taxation, which we'll do here in a couple of minutes. We mentioned the open door clinic, I think Andy did earlier. We're going to have a, a full work session on that, I think in January is the plan. But the folks, nonprofit from the cities, they attended via Zoom, they're kind of a support nonprofit for those types of clinics. They came and talked to us about some of the details. And then Tyler Garrison gave us updates on all the things that are going on with the buildings. It, it's remarkable how on top of everything he always is when he presents to us. So kind of another update from him. But other than that, the need of what we, what we did is we're going to talk about in closed session here and also the truth of taxation meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mike or anyone else on the? Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mike or anyone else on the operations committee? All right, then. We have an option, a couple of options, I believe, for how we proceed because it's after six P. M. We could vote, have a motion to recess our regular meeting, go into our truth and taxation hearing, then close the truth and taxation hearing, move to open the regular meeting, take it out of recess, and then go into closed session. Or we can.
Yes, I think that's the right way to do it because then people can leave if they want to.
Correct.
So anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recess the board meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mike, second by Mari, to recess the board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. Motion carries. We'll now move into recess. Do I have someone who will offer a motion to open the truth and taxation hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the truth and taxation hearing.
Thank you. Motion by Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Julie. Motion by Mike, second by Julie to open the public truth and taxation hearing. We will turn the time over to.
We got to vote. You wouldn't vote on it?
Yes, we have to vote.
During the discussion, it is after six P. M.
Yes, it is. It's after six. It's six twenty-five. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. Motion carries. We'll now move into the truth and taxation hearing. Jessica.
All right. So we are here tonight to discuss the two thousand twenty-three payable two thousand twenty-four property tax levy for these schools.
Jessica, why don't you just to make sure, move the mic. There you go. Thank you.
All right. So again, under Minnesota's truth and taxation law, it just requires that cities, counties, and school districts follow certain steps before adopting a tax levy for the current year. Requires the notice to be mailed to each property owner, which you would have received. School districts are required to hold a single meeting in which the public is allowed to speak, and the budget and levy is discussed, and it must be held after six P. M. So this is that meeting. Requirements for tonight's meeting of the truth and taxation. We are to discuss the proposed profit levy for taxes payable two thousand twenty-four, provide and discuss information on our current budget, which is school year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and then the public is given a reasonable amount of time to comment on the proposed tax levy budget and ask questions. Some key points that make school school districts different than our cities, counties, and township is that revenue formulas are set by the state legislature, except for voter-approved referendums. Local levy and the state aid mix are set by state legislature. And same for all is that an increase in your local taxes does not necessarily mean an increase in revenues for the school district in this case. Here's a very neat picture on the process, which actually is not this neat. But in step number six, that's where we are here tonight. The school board has adopted a proposed levy back in September and that were based on limits that are set by the state. And we are here tonight to approve the final levy. And then the next step is you will get these lovely tax statements that you love in March that show how much tax you will pay for the next year. This is just a graph of the wonderful different categories of budgeting and levying and audits and our school year and how they all intermix. And so working on budgeting at a different year, levy of a different year, audit of a different year, kind of all the same same time. All right. So now we'll take a look at our two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four preliminary budget. School school districts operate fund accounting. And so in Fairmont area schools, we do have four funds, the general fund. We have our food service fund, community service fund, which is early early childhood, family education, school readiness. CER operates out of the community service fund. And then our debt service fund, which is just the payment of principal and interest on our bonds. All right. So for here, this we show the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three actual revenues in our funds, which totaled thirty thousand seven hundred and ninety-two thirty million seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and our two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget at thirty-two million two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So an increase in total revenues of four point six one percent projected. You can see here, a majority eighty-five point two nine percent of our general fund revenue is from the state aid. And local taxes make up nine point seven seven percent of our total general fund revenue. Now, looking at expenditures, we ended two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three actual at thirty million ninety-one thousand dollars, and our projected expenditures for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget are thirty-two million fifty-four thousand dollars, an increase of about three point one percent. Looking at our general fund, here's a breakdown of the different program areas that we have. You can see that the three largest are our regular instruction at forty-four percent, special education instruction at fourteen percent, and sites, buildings, and equipment at fifteen point five percent. This is just a graph on salary and wages. And our general fund make up sixty-one percent of our total expenditures, and benefits make up fifteen point three six percent. So those make up the majority of our total general fund expenses. Here's just a look at where we're projecting our fund balances to end at the end of two thousand twenty-four. All right. So the school district, the current levy is two thousand twenty-three payable two thousand twenty-four. The levy will be certified in two thousand twenty-three in December. This will be collected next year through your property tax payments in two thousand twenty-four, and the school district will recognize the revenue in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. School levies, a school district levy must either be set by the state formula or voter-approved. Some impacts that you might have issues driven by legislative decisions. So change in sales ratio, change in your tax capacity rate structure or different laws mandating code compliance could be reasons why your taxes could change. It could also be because voters be because voters approve building bond issue, excess levy referendums. Local factors that could change your taxes, inflationary pressure on real estate markets, tax abatements, property improvements not previously taxed. And then if you possibly have a change in your property classification from homestead to non-homestead, a multitude of different reasons. When we were looking at the two thousand twenty-four levy, sixty point two percent is allocated to the general fund, two percent is to the community education fund, and thirty-seven point nine percent goes to our debt service fund, again to pay the principal and interest on the district debt. So two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the net levy was six million two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and the limit set by the state for twenty-three, twenty-four was six million five hundred and two thousand dollars approximately. This is an increase of two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars for a percentage increase of three point three four percent. Here's some different major major changes to our different levy categories. Operating capital, we have an increase. We have an increase in most of our categories in our general fund, and that is offset in a decrease to our community service fund and our debt service fund. So there we see the net change of two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and eleven dollar increase. Again, main variables that could cause your property tax to increase or decrease could be the change in market values, classification of property or class rates, and those class rates are set by legislature, change in your property tax credits, voter-approved referendums, or increases or decreases in levy amounts caused by changes in state funding formulas. Same thing, the value of your property could have decreased or increased. And not only could your property decrease or increase, that impacts your tax, but what other properties have done and school board actions. Otherwise, I think we have to open it to public comment. But otherwise, the total proposed school tax levy is six million five hundred two thousand sixty-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
Okay, any public comments? I don't see anyone really. Okay, we need to make a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three payable two thousand twenty-four tax levy in the amount of the two hundred, right?
No, six point five nine. It's on the big screen right there.
Oh. Six million five hundred and two thousand and sixty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. I'm not used to talking in such big numbers.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Julie, a second by Mari. I believe we do roll call vote on this. Is that right?
I don't know. It's not a resolution.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Makes it easy. Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Jen?
Aye.
Oh, wait, we have to vote on it?
No, you don't have to vote on it.
Jen?
Aye.
Aye, chair goes aye.
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 Mari?
All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
I make a motion to close the public truth of taxation meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second by Mari? We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor closing the truth and taxation?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to return from recess of the regularly scheduled school board meeting of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mike, second by Jen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Make a motion to go into closed session, discuss sale of real estate, specifically the home farm property.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Jen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We move to closed meeting.